All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order, verify compliance with open meetings law notification and adopt the agenda. You know, please stand for the pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kathy, did you receive any requests to comment? Okay, we've received some questions related to some of the discussion items. And the plan was to cover some of that in the reports, item five. So what we'd like to do if possible is move reports to now, get that information out before we go to the rest. Does anyone have an objection to that? Okay, seeing that, we'll go to five reports, a superintendent's report.
So I'm gonna just highlight some of the things that I think that will be of the most interest to you and are probably consuming most of the time, partly because we don't have a lot of decisions for a lot of these. But so just wanted to give you a status on where that is. Friday, we had a statewide superintendent's meeting. Department of Health Services attended that. We often get when we do a statewide, and we haven't, this is only the second one that we've held. And so it was very important to see what folks are doing across the state. So I'll talk a little bit about that. First thing, I did wanna share with you the employee work status. We had talked about that a few meetings ago, but I do wanna share with you. We did put, if you read on the e-weekly on Friday, we did put a notice to all of our employees just because of things going on, that they are still expected to be working full-time at their employment here. And should they be doing any other part-time employment, which is allowed as during a regular school year or under normal conditions, they can't interfere with what they would be working here. So we felt that was important. I know that there might be, you know, different times that people are working here, but they are still, they are still getting paid full-time. It's important that they recognize that, even though it might look a little bit different. Reporting on the virtual learning progress right now, I shared last time that we were getting ready to unveil the new grading, that started last Monday. We also looked at a revised schedule, both for our students and teachers to plan out a little bit. Our high school went to a blue and gold schedule to help focus the weeks on subjects, so they weren't having to balance so many things at once. And asked all the teachers to get out weekly plans, so students could see what lies out the entire week and sort of work that way. And that's working better for a lot of students. So they, instead of pacing it and keeping them there, they can see what their work is, focus it. If it's a math-science week, then focus on that and really work. And then the next week might be our humanities classes. So that seems to be better for a couple of reasons. So students can pace their own work and work and know what's available to them. We also have worked with our new grading. If you're a grade six through 12, we're asking that we actually record some pre-assessments, so we have a better idea. I think there's been some assumptions that we start every unit and every student either knows nothing or knows the same amount, and we have to be able to address where students are. So we were finding it's a lot harder when we're virtual to know where students are starting at. So when we're face-to-face, it's a lot easier to figure that out. And so the assumption is that, you know, students are starting at this point. But we have some students that that might be too far where they're at, or some students that aren't being challenged because of that. So the use of pre-assessments is to help address that when sometimes students are, either aren't being challenged. So they already know that, they do not need to start at that point. But also, if that's too far for them, we need to figure out where their starting point is. So a couple of things that were put in place, and we're starting our second week of that. Our learning does go through June 12th. Previously, it was, it went through June 11th for our K through 11 students. But with the pause in learning, we have extended our seniors through that time also, if they needed. But again, as we shared with our seniors, or Mr. Tolleson is sharing with our seniors, that if you use your weekly plans ahead of time and they're done, you may not be going all the way until that amount of time. But we needed to make sure that, for any students that were behind, that we needed to have that extra buffer of time to make sure all of those students get that work in. Which leads me to my next subject, subject of graduation, which was probably at the primary focus of our work last week, as it has been for school districts across the state, and what's allowed and what's not allowed. I think the changing conditions with everything make it very challenging to decide what we're going to do for any of those things. As an overview, you know, there are things that come from the state, whether they're the governor's office or Department of Health Services. But then there are also things that come from your county officials. And then there are things that come from your local officials. And that varies quite a bit across the state. And so when you're trying to get guidance, or laws, or orders, or whatever they're called, and trying to operate with them, it's very hard to interpret that. And people try to compare, and every situation isn't the same. We're in a much more populated area than other parts of the state. And so some of the things that follow are there, yet some of the orders are, you know, across, are across the entire state. So it's been challenging. And when you get to something that people have either local traditions, such as graduation, or we have all of those considerations to take into account. So we did come out with our plans for what we're calling our graduation at this point, with the information that is, that we know and that we have now. And I get that people want advance notice. We all want advance notice. As a person who loves to plan, this is a very challenging time for all of us. And so I think we're waiting to make the best decision we can. And we felt that we were at a point that we needed to make a decision about graduation and couldn't wait any longer. Some districts came out earlier than that, weeks ahead, and had talked about having an in-person ceremony in the end of July. And so they didn't make any new announcements, if you will, but they all are very much aware that that is not necessarily a guarantee, even if they had made those announcements for some in-person graduations at this point. So we sort of put that out there. If things change, we have that date, and that's something we'll consider. But we also need to move forward. We know that there are some of our students who are entering the military for the world of work, or whatever that might be. And so we need to make sure that we do have a tiered approach to this, because some may not be around at the end of July for some of that. And so we sort of have a two-part celebration that is going on. So we use June 14th at one o'clock, which is a week later than our previous date of June 7th, partly because now we are extending the learning through June 12th to make sure that we have enough of those students who are able to have that there. I know that they're, you know, scheduling things. And because it's not the extended family, we felt that that timeline worked okay for us. We are doing our combination. We've started a tradition over the last several years of having our seniors do the cap-and-dog walk-through through the elementaries. Last year, we added the middle school. And that's a very popular thing for our students to have that memory. So we decided to combine our walk with sort of a succession, if you will, through the parking lots and ask our K-12 teachers to be in those parking lots, so they could at least drive by the building and have that elementary building feel with their elementary teachers. They obviously can't do all the things they did in the past, like hug them and go look in their rooms that they once had. But we felt at least it was something to try to preserve what that looked like. And so that's what that ceremony looks like on the 14th. And we're still looking at July 25th. Most likely, we'll have a decision by July 1st, as most other districts will, about what end of July dates might allow us to do. So the DPI waiver for instructional minutes that I've been talking about will be on the board agenda for next Monday. We did put a public hearing notice out in a class-one newspaper, the Journal Sentinel is what we're required to do. So that will, there will be a hearing prior to our meeting. The hearing will start at 6:30, if any public would like to talk to the hearing. Again, they'll have to submit prior. And then if, and then a board agenda item, just like we do the budget hearing in the annual meeting, will be available at, will take action then during the actual meeting next week. So more information on that. Summer school 2020, that's the next big topic across the state. I think one of the sort of conflicting information that we're getting is that childcare centers are allowed to operate in schools right now. And yet, we're not allowed to offer any summer school to any extent. So it seems like it's a mixed message. And I think that DHS took away that message on Friday, and hopefully is gonna come out with some additional guidance on that. So a lot of districts are feeling that right now, there is a little bit of virtual, I shouldn't say a little bit, there is some virtual learning burnout, especially with our elementary students. And so we are not really going to consider virtual learning for our elementary students right away. If that's the only thing that we're allowed to do later in the summer, we may look at that. But right now, we really feel like the students who are, if it's a struggle for them right now to just add more summer school in that same venue, it's probably not going to get us the results. And so also, just giving a pause from what we're calling learning right now is also healthy. So we will most likely offer a virtual summer school for our grades seven through 12. From, this is still very tentative, for about three weeks, from June 15th through July 3rd. Remember, our buildings still can't be used at that time through June 30th. And so any of our grades seven through 12 students who have learning that they missed or incompletes because of this, this gives them that buffer of time to continue learning and getting all of that learning in, to make up those credits of learning in grades seven through 12. We plan on running then probably a second summer school session, which we're hoping to do face-to-face later in the summer. We would not do what we would typically done with our enrichment classes, such as cooking or science experiments, but focus on academic skills for those students who've been in intervention, which seem to be working well. Those, the students that are doing interventions virtually are elementary students. And some of them who have a special ed, paraprofessional support, in a smaller group, seem to be working. We'd like to bring in some of those students face-to-face, to be able to work with them, to see, to make sure we don't have that summer slide in learning. So that's sort of our tentative plan, more on that to come. Again, conditions change, rules change, all of that good stuff on a daily basis. But summer school is really the next thing, and I think parents are wondering too. So a little bit of pause for our elementary students, and really hoping to bring them back in buildings. The other reason superintendents are hoping to do that is to be able to practice, or at least pilot some social distancing, what that looks like through a summer school venue. Like, how are we able to operate with, you know, classes of eight to 10? What are some things we haven't thought about when students come back in these spaces, rather than looking at what that might look like when we do come back in the fall? Mike is gonna talk a little bit about school funding and legislature. And I think there are two, I'll just give you my take on it. I think, you know, I think there are two perspectives on it. One is that the sky is falling, and that's probably your safer bet. But you wanna be careful a little bit about creating too much hysteria. But at the same time, those of us who went through 2009 in school funding, know that that is very much a reality. And so I think that that could be a possibility to that extreme. There also could be the other extreme in which there is not much of an appetite for doing too much for 2021, because remember, November is an election. And then we would expect to see much more happen in the next biennial budget. And so we have to prepare both ways for that. And as you know, school finance is complex. When you think about how do you spend 41, 46, and all of those things that go with that very intentionally. So it's not just a matter of, and someone's checking to see how I'm spending less or more. Everywhere and where, which pot of money we choose to take it from, has an impact when you look at some of those things, especially when we're dealing with some construction projects. So I'll let Mike talk a little bit more on that. But from our level, I think the biggest concern for all of us is, and that's why I wanted to make sure that you all saw the Journal Sentinel article, is that contract dates by state statute, and that's really important that our public understands that, is that we are governed by state statute dates for contracts, unlike private businesses. We have to issue those, those had to be out. We are no longer in a case where we can not issue contracts, and that we're bound by those statutory timelines. Unless something extraordinary happened, and the legislators actually changed that law, which they've never done, to that extent, that would be something unique. So that falls for anybody who has a contract governed by 118, got 22, which is all of our educators and our teachers. So people might say, well, then, if the legislators do come in and have a massive budget cut, then you might have to lay off teachers. Well, guess what? Statute does not allow you to do that. So we might be, when we have a high percentage of our budget in staffing, those are gonna be some concerns for us, so. Reopening schools. Yeah, I know, I get the question daily by a lot of people. And I don't have a lot of answers on that. I think there's a lot of speculation. I think safely, we can say it won't look like it ever has before. What that means, I don't know. Does that mean that we don't even start on September 1? Possibly. Does it mean we do things, people have thrown out things like tiered starts, approaches, half-day every other day, a lot of different things. The question really, as I shared, I think, before, is the amount, how do we get students to school when social distancing on a bus is just not possible? So how do you get students here? And once they're here, how do we, when we have classes of 25, how do you get, how do we create at least six feeds and all of the other stuff that we need to do with that, in addition to things like fayette and lunch and everything that surrounds that? So I think there are a lot of questions out there for what that looks like in the fall. People are speculating. And for whatever people, again, I'm not a science person, so if anybody can speak to that. But should there be a round two of this, what does that look like? And so I think those are the concerns. We also look at us, our students with IDPs, and what that looks like for services for them, who typically receive those in person, and how we're able to, you know, do our best right now. But obviously, it wasn't, it's a very different type of service that we're providing. So those are all considerations when you look at reopening schools. I wouldn't say if I was a district that planned on opening early in August because of construction, I would probably rethink that considerably right now. And will districts ask for waivers for next year? Possibly. Not sure if everybody else have caught the article that UW School is gonna be not asking for ACT and SAT scores either this year or next year. And if that, we know that some private, Marquette, has stopped asking for that entirely. I mean, so it wasn't new, but that's just one of those perspectives. Because I think a lot of people are concerned about what does, you know, what does that look like now when students obviously are in a different place, and the tests that used to be may be different. As we know, AP tests are different this year also. A little bit, I did share with you some pictures from C.D. Schmidt, from the construction updates. They continue to move forward. We're on the second phase of the asbestos removal. And so they're, they didn't, the third phase, actually, of that, probably. So they're on the last part of the old teacher workroom, the wall that's there. So it's hard to get down right now. They, and they're working second shift, so they're there right now, moving that next layer. But if you look at some of those pictures, it's just absolutely crazy. Once they took down that wall, the amount of sunlight or light that comes in that space will be really nice. And so we can start to envision what that space looks like now, and how students will be able to use it. We think that's really critical, especially with social distancing, that we're gonna have another large space to be able to spread without it. We are looking at our library, our high school library, and reorganizing some space in there to be able to make sure that we have as many spaces that we can have students go into to maximize that ability to do that. And so we are spending some time this summer, looking at current spaces that we have to make sure that, however, what our, that might look like in all of our buildings when possible, that we're able to do that. So I think, I'll pause right there, and I don't think it'd be a question.
How is our graduation rate? Are we, do we have kids that are not gonna graduate?
I asked Charlie about that, where we are, and it's a little, it's a little bit harder to get. Normally, at this point, you know, the counselors have lists of students who are, who are normally, where we were at March 13th, we're using that date. And we're about where we normally were at March 13th. And so we have done a few home visits for students who have not connected or with our SRO. Charlie and our SRO have done three, four, or five home visits already to see where is this student? They are like not showing up anywhere. They're not like connecting home calls. We've done some home visits to figure out where that is. Not all seniors, but some. So it's hard right now to get an actual number with seniors. I think we'll know a little bit at the end of this week, what that number is compared to where it was. So we think that we're up a little bit, but we think now that we've put some parameters and deadlines and a ceremony and all of that stuff in place. Because before, it was really hard with, oh, we're just doing and doing, and there isn't. Now that we've started to give them some dates, and this is what an end looks like, we'll hopefully get them to realize that there is an end to this, so.
And so you say up, meaning what? More?
I don't, I, yeah, more, yeah. More students who are not in the place of turning in their work. But it's, I, it's comparing apples to oranges from last year to this year, honestly.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I have an all. So do we have a fair amount of commitments from teachers for the commencement?
Yeah, I talked to the elementary principals this afternoon, got a meeting. And I think that they, so I'm gonna talk to them specifically, because I understand that, you know, it's a little bit different for them. I think our high school teachers are committed to that. Charlie and I talked about, you know, what that looks like. If we, we typically do a sign-up for our high school teachers to attend the high school graduation, just because we get roles and we line them up. So we will do the same thing with high school teachers. I've had a middle school teacher who contacted me, who felt, who was really attached to this class, had done some things, and is going to organize the middle school teachers from that perspective. And so we talked about that. And so we think that our elementary teachers also will participate. So we haven't asked them to sign up or attend, but it was just released on Friday. So they have to have their staff meetings this week to sort of give them an idea. But I, I really hope so. I mean, with the approach that we're taking, to combine those two events. And I know that our teachers, our K-A teachers also appreciated seeing the seniors as much as they did enjoy going back to these schools, so.
Yeah, I hope we have a good turnout.
Anybody else? Good. Thank you. So we'll move on to 3B, 2020, 2021 border, oh, I'm sorry. Preliminary budget factors, 5B.
Sure. So just wanted to give everyone a couple of things. First of all, just as a reminder, for this year's budget, the 1920 budget, remember, when we passed the budget, we were budgeting for a deficit. And that was due to putting money into Fund 41 to cover cafeteria remodel. And so that deficit was meant to reallocate Fund 10, Fund balance, to this particular project. Meaning, at the end of this year, we were projecting to have an $8 million fund balance, which is about 28% of our general operations. So even though we had shifted dollars to Fund 41 to cover, still a healthy fund balance in place. This is typically where I give my caveat, which is fund balance is not a savings account. It is a snapshot in time of a district's financial position as of June 30th. And it's assets minus liabilities. So like any household, for example, if you have an annual salary, and you get your salary paid to you twice a year, once on June 30th and once on December 31st, if someone asks for your fund balance position on July 1st, the day after you get your first payment of the year, it's gonna look a lot different than if someone said, show me your fund balance on December 1st, when you haven't been paid since June 30th. Schools operate much in the same way. Majority of our revenues come January through June, a large payment mid-June, and then we're asked to show fund balance on June 30th. And then we go almost till January without a majority of revenue. So just to speak to that caveat, because I think a lot will come up about the financial positions of districts, and what fund balance is and what it isn't. This particular year, just to recall, the first year of the biennium was a $262 per pupil increase in revenues for this year. That had been the most since, I believe, 2009-ish, when we got, schools got 275. Next year, or 2021, was projected to be, or is, right now in state law, 179 per pupil. So that's kind of just what's in place. And just, so just want to give people that kind of just backdrop to what this particular year is, or was intended to be. Obviously, well, I'll get to, I'll get to where we are currently with 1920. So maybe what's most important, or what's on a lot of people's minds then, are the 2021, just considerations about what we're thinking about. As Lisa has superintendent meetings, to a lesser degree, us directors of business services get together as well. And she's absolutely right, in that there is a wide spectrum of, my God, the sky is falling, everyone run, to hold on, nothing has changed yet, and we don't know what this is gonna look like. So Quinn, I think at the last meeting, mentioned that districts have been running three different scenarios, three different budget scenarios. Those scenarios come from, it's called the School Administrators Alliance, the SAA. They are a lobby group that's pretty well-connected and kind of gets in the ear of what's going on in Madison. And they had suggested running budgets for the current scenario for next year, which is 179 per pupil increase. That's the biennium budget states, a $0 per pupil increase, and a negative $50 per pupil decrease, okay? And so what I intend to do with that is I will certainly run those scenarios for you next month in our preliminary budget, to show you what that would mean from a revenue standpoint, and sort of what sort of dollars we're talking about when those sorts of increases or potential decreases could put into play. Wisconsin has indicated, they believe, at least this was Wisconsin to Washington DC, that they're projecting, without really a lot of hard facts to go off of, a $2 billion shortfall because of this. On a $19 billion budget, you can do the math there, you're talking about a 10 to 12% decrease in revenues for this particular year. And obviously, there's a lot of question then about how that quote-unquote "pain" gets disseminated to everybody, all the people, the competing entities in the state, education being one of them. The state did have a rainy day fund of about $600 million. Remember, and there's a lot, just a couple of months ago, of what to do with some of that surplus. And this may be one time where gridlock may have played out well, and that, that those dollars did not go anywhere.
Well, there's two different things there. There was a surplus and a rainy day fund.
There, there, you're right. And that, that's helping to add, I suppose, to the rainy day fund. So this, this fund could help, obviously, if this isn't a rainy day, then I don't know what is. This would help offset some of that projected loss. Typically, the state has, can do revenue projections in May. They do that every other year to line up with the biennium budget. Typically, if they, or if they needed to, they could do it in May as well. However, this year, because taxes have been put off to July 15th, there's not a lot of good data for them to use to have a real strong indication about what the effects could be. So now, the state, the Legislative Fiscal Bureau for the state has said, maybe early August would be the first time which they could get some real hard numbers, because they'll know what July 15th and property taxes looked like at that time. So we're kind of, what we were hoping was an early May to mid-May projection. It makes sense now that it'll be later in August. When we start talking about potential decreases, you know, there's a, to parallel it back to the repair bill that was done in 2011, that had a decrease of $566 per pupil. So could that eventually be a standard that districts are looking at? Some are, some are taking that into consideration. However, remember, what occurred there in 2011 were the associated tools, tools that were meant to help offset this budget repair bill. People sometimes put those synonymously together. They were two different things. It was the repair, budget repair bill, and then Act 10, and the tools associated with that. So the reason I'm bringing that up, and Lisa said it very well, is that repair bill in 2011 was done in January, well before statutory requirements for staffing, contracts, health insurance decisions, all those things were still upcoming. For districts, those windows have passed. And so those districts who are not, oh my God, the sky is falling, they're more, here's what state law is, 179 per pupil, would cite those factors as a reason as to why maybe 2021 isn't the year the shoe would drop. Clearly, right now, there's, what are we on, part four, maybe, of federal stimulus? That, that right now, while not a huge appetite, it appears at the federal level, at least from a side, at least from one side to... at least from a side, at least from one side, to engage in further stimulus for state and local governments. That's still being talked about, that's still a possibility. So states, of course, lobbying hard for a part four, which would help to backfill maybe some of the foregone revenues that have gone in connection with an economic shutdown and high unemployment. So that's still out there, whether, how much of a hope or a wish, or whatever that is, remains to be seen. And we'll see how that plays out. And so we're really paying attention to a lot of these different factors. I have one more in my head slide. Is there any questions, though, on some of the factors that we're looking at or considering?
Well, if you're, since you're talking about the repair bill.
Yeah.
And shortly thereafter, it was discovered that the UW system had millions of dollars sitting, call it what you want, right? And they caught wind of that, and they put the kibosh on raising intuition and had them spend that down. And when the legislators see these numbers for fund balances, they, that's all they see.
I know, yeah.
And that's the first thing they're gonna say is, you need to spend that down. So I don't think it's, it's just, this is just my comment, this is my opinion. But they see those numbers and they say, hmm. They don't really look any farther, it seems, so that's all.
Anybody else?
So next month, we do need to pass a preliminary budget. We have to pass a preliminary budget in order to give us spending authority in July. So what I am going to present is current law. Clearly, that will change if we get a strong indication that that's gonna change between now and next month. I'll run for you alternative revenue scenarios, so you understand where we would stand, and if a change would come, what that would look like. But the preliminary budget's gonna pass as state law currently is. And again, I think what plays into a twenty twenty-one status quo is the timing, which is, again, the repair bill in two thousand eleven was in January. We are in, well into the fall, when they would start to get some sort of preliminary projections. There is the possibility, like I said, of a federal stimulus. State elections in November are gonna make people in legislature pause about what sort of cuts are gonna happen prior to that. So there is some timing issues that help, at least for the twenty twenty-one school year. I think that only means greater possibility of a, of a, of a strong decrease in the next biennium. I think if you could reduce something now, it could offset what the next biennium looks like. But again, that's for legislation to decide. So that's how I'm planning on reporting out the preliminary budget. We'll run some, like I said, per pupil revenues. I'll run some different scenarios with less co-curricular fees, who knows what that's gonna look like. Bank interest is way down now, we were trending, obviously, two and a half percent interest, that has collapsed. I begin to kind of fine-tune some of the non-salary expenditure portions of the budget, so I'll go through with you on where those have tightened up. But next month's preliminary budget, obviously with these things swirling in our mind, will continue to be status quo from a legislative one seventy-nine per pupil standpoint.
So Mike, in the past, you've talked about these worksheets that you get. So they're not coming, huh? Or they're coming, they're just blank? Because you usually say that it comes with information on them, and you fill in things?
Yeah. No, I'll fill them in, I'll fill them in, absolutely. But I'm gonna use current, this second year is supposed to be just cake, piece of cake. Just fill in your variables, there's the biennium budget, which is set in stone. This same worksheet exists, and I'll put it out there, but there may be multiple sheets.
So when the governor and the legislature talked about a five percent decrease, was that for twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two, twenty-three?
That's right, I mean, that's right now, immediate. For their state government, was five percent immediately, about seventy million.
For state government?
For state government, not anything on our end, yeah. So, you know, just to throw out a quick number, let's just say it is ten percent eventually, a ten percent cut. And we're talking about a revenue limit formula, that's twenty, we have twenty-three million, twenty-three and a half million on our revenue limit formula. You cut ten percent from that, two point three million. So, but again, lots of variables, and could there be greater support from the federal, from any number of places? We'll see.
So the reason we wanted to put the reports now is because we do have four proposals tonight that involve very heavy, and this time of year, we do, we get some approval on that, so we can spend everything on this. We wanted to give the lay of the land, there's not any magic answers we have right now, but part of it is the, unlike, you know, it's three-dimensional a school finance budget is, because there are variables where, you know, if you write a check out of your own checking account, what's in there is what's in there. Unique about school finance is sometimes, like with the deficit budget, it actually plays well, because you've got state aid, and you've got Fund forty-one and forty-six, and all of these variables that play into it. It's not quite as straightforward of, have the money, then we do it. And you have things like maintenance of effort and special education and all of those types of things. So when it comes to some of the, just to let you know behind the scenes, you know, we're running, we've got lists of things about what would, you know, what would happen or what wouldn't happen related to construction, because those are different funds than some of the other things. And so depending upon how we categorize some of the expenditures and where it is, we have different lists. And so when we do bring things forward, like tonight, some of these are things that have to be brought forward, if you will. But please ask the questions, you should ask the questions about that, and to what extent is this, you know, a critical need, or whatever those questions are. But there are other factors that play into just, you know, are we gonna spend money or not spend money? Because there's also that domino effect, and I think we've all seen what happens, especially under some of the operational things, if you wait too long, whether it's buildings, or roofing, or technology, or some of those things, you can't hold off those entirely, because then it'll eventually catch up, and then where does it come from? But also, you know, is this truly a need, or is it, you know, at that? We wouldn't bring it forward if we didn't think there was. But sometimes there's not a clear-cut answer either, because variables appear to be changing at this point. So that was the reason we wanted to sort of talk about these reports, to sort of give you some background information about what lies out there and what potentially could be coming, before we get into some of the future action items discussions.
Anybody else? Before we move on? Okay, thank you both. So move on to three consent agenda. A is personal recommendations, and B is twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Board of Education meeting dates. Would anyone like to remove an item? Okay, then I'll take a motion to approve items A and B.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing non-motion carries. Onto four, discussion of future action items. A is a staff device cycle.
So I have, we have Todd, interest here, to answer any specific device questions. Granted, pretty detailed layout of what the proposal is and why devices are, these are for, devices are for, predominantly our educator staff, so two hundred or so devices there. Administration, some professional technical staff as well. All in all, about two hundred and fifty devices that we are asking for. We've had Apple devices for our staff, and some are two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen devices through two thousand seventeen devices. You really should be, well, first of all, the longevity of the devices goes to show part of the reason why we're choosing to continue with the Apple product. When you're talking eight, nine years for a technology device, that's good longevity. We weren't seeing that out of PCs from districts who use PCs. So we'd gone with the longevity piece. As far as the financial point of this, this would be much like what was done previously with Apple products in this district. It would be on a lease program. So we're talking about the payments, we're getting all two hundred and fifty this summer, and being on a four-year lease agreement with a one-dollar buyout after year four. So one dollar, devices are ours. We plan on flying by the four-year cycle. We'd continue to use devices at least into a fifth year. And like we said, we've seen good success even through years six and seven. But devices are getting pretty old. So the cost on a yearly basis would be about, I'd have to look, about sixty-three thousand dollars or so. Year one, meaning in twenty twenty-one, there would be no payment on our behalf, because we would take all of our current devices that we have, trade them in to a company called Diamond Assets, who's given us a breakdown of all of our devices, put a dollar amount to them. We're gonna get about that much back from the Apple products, so that in twenty twenty-one, there essentially is no lease payment. We just take that revenue and put it right back in. So you're talking about your first lease payment in twenty-one, twenty-two, so a three-year lease payment. And then we just, we do the same thing with the next cycle. You take all your product, sell it back, and start a new year, a new, you know, four-year lease cycle. So on the financial side, that's what that piece would look like. So I'd like the idea of, you know, with some uncertainty, not having a twenty twenty-one payment in essence, and keeping that off the books, and our first payment now till twenty-one, it gives you time. Should there be any budgetary considerations to think about how to work around your payments? Again, specific device questions, or how we hold staff, or why we made any sort of decisions with the device itself? Todd and Chris can answer that really well. Any financial questions, you can direct to me.
Anybody? Start on that end.
So, I think, Mike, my only question was about you, you put in two cycles in the spreadsheet, and the pricing was the same for both cycles? So I was curious if we've gotten guaranteed pricing, or if that was just an estimate?
Yeah, so the second cycle is not a guaranteed pricing.
Okay.
It's only taking forward what we would have.
Okay.
The purpose of the two cycles was to simply show where we came out ahead on a MacBook versus the PCs, just for apples-to-apples comparisons, that was the only purpose.
Okay.
So more than likely, in twenty-four, twenty-five, we might not even start a cycle two. We may still have the apples that we're gonna use for a fifth year, and hopefully a sixth year. But it's to show, from the financial standpoint, where we come ahead with the MacBook versus a PC.
Okay.
Nancy?
So how many staff does the two hundred and fifty cover?
So it covers all of our educators, covers all of our administrators.
A few support staff, coaches.
Coaches, yeah. Professional technical supervisors, managers.
Maybe I should ask, how many people doesn't it cover?
It wouldn't cover our support staff, they do not have a own, a personal device, like a computer. Food service custodians don't. Much of our district office staff, because they have desktops, doesn't cover them. It's predominantly educator, administrator, and professional technical manager supervisors.
Yeah, I need to ask this in a different way. How many people who require laptops does this cover or not cover?
Covers everybody that needs a laptop.
Okay, so everybody that has a laptop, or?
Yes, yes, yes.
So everybody?
Everybody.
So doesn't it make more sense if you, like, do some one year, and then do some the next year, and then do some the next year, and kind of rotate that?
Well, we had kind of gotten out of that schedule, that's our, that's our issue right now. And so we had looked at two things. We had looked at just a flat-out purchase, right, which would have had to break it up in that regard. We would have had to piecemeal this together. We're still taking some devices, though, we're heavy on the early-end devices, so it would be very difficult to continue to sustain early devices when we had to chunk it out. With a lease like this, this allows us to spread the payments out over four years, just like we would have anyway, by being on that different cycle, yet we get all the devices at once and cover everybody. So we, the financial effect is still the same.
Okay, but then in four, or five, or six years, we're gonna have to do this all over again, and that option may not be there then.
You would have to then say, we're either gonna write, we're either gonna have to continue to lease, you would be in this cycle of leasing, or if you would get out of that cycle of leasing, you'd have to set up your budget, yeah, differently, or start that sooner. Say it is year five, we're no longer gonna be leasing, we're gonna start to chunk this out instead.
Chris, do you have something to say?
One benefit, everybody getting this, everybody's on the same platform, same device. Teacher doesn't have to try and figure out what's going on. I shouldn't possibly ask the teacher right next door, how do you do this? Everybody's exact same device, where now some of the software that we're using on some of the Macs is different versions.
Okay.
That only goes off solo. Each device, everybody will have the same device.
Okay, thanks.
Jesse?
Can you respond on the profile manager and what exactly that covers?
Um, it's, you guys, if you're gonna speak, I think you need to take a mic, otherwise it's fine, you can't. Profile manager. Profile manager is a, it's called an M D M, Mobile Device Manager. I don't know if you're familiar with any of that, that's a, each device is, connects to a, let's just call it a server. And we can push applications to that, that's basically what it is. Any type of, like I said, applications, it can be, it's managed, we manage the devices.
So does that manage patching then as well?
Correct.
So those are automatically pushed?
Yes.
Okay.
Not the same as a Windows-type device, a Windows, it's not the same as a Windows device management.
Is the Windows device management included in this spreadsheet? I see that in parentheses, SOFO is mentioned as antivirus. Does that cover the patch management as well, under SOFO?
No, we have a patch management right now. Yes, we have a patch management device server right now that's pushing Windows updates out to Windows PCs. So that's, that's, we just added the, what is that, the SOFOs here? Yeah, SOFOs to it as a cost, as another cost that we would have to add.
Okay, so the device manager is something that's separate, that isn't on there, that would be an additional cost, but we still have it because we have other devices that are Windows devices on the network?
Correct.
And then with the profile manager, that's pushing those updates automatically, then to those, there's no manual requirement from the teachers or staff?
Right, they check in, as soon as they check in on our network, it probably, you know, there's a, similar to Windows devices, it's downloaded on a server, as soon as it checks in, it just starts to download seamlessly.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good.
Kevin?
No questions.
Quinn?
Well, I won't ask what Jesse asked, because I don't know what the hell he's talking about. Say that. You know, so what is the newest model that we have in play right now?
Newest, twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen, yeah.
And those are going out as well? Is that a wise decision?
We only have to have twenty-three, of the two hundred and fifty laptops we have deployed, we only have twenty-three that are twenty seventeen models.
And obviously, the amount we give that asset, diamonds, diamond assets.
Yeah, it's the highest value.
Is higher for that value than as well.
Through that model?
Yeah, so again, it kind of goes to Nancy's question of why aren't we chunking them out, those purchasing, those purchases? And again, it's to get everybody on the same device, higher value for those particulars. I mean, you're still in year three, to get everybody back to square one again. It just felt like it's twenty, yeah.
And did we budget for this?
This is budgeted, I have fifty-five thousand budgeted right now. What I hadn't taken into consideration though was the offset of sixty-three thousand from diamond assets. So this would actually be an expenditure that would come off of the preliminary budget for next year, freeing up dollars for next year. Does that make sense? Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. And you said it doesn't go into effect till next year?
First year will be after July one, yeah, so I have fiscal year, next fiscal year.
Right when we're gonna get whacked about ten percent?
We don't know that, but like I said, next year's payment is not on the books. Because we have offsetting revenue to purchase next year's first-year payment.
From resale?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Anybody follow up before we move on? Okay. You all? On to B, all-on-board video board.
Do you wanna call Dave? Um, okay. So, while Jonathan's calling, I'm just gonna put this out here. The proposal that I felt most strongly about is the Mac, is the devices. I think those are needed, and I think it's smart to go on a four-year payment cycle. Everything else on here, I am, let's discuss. So, this particular, the scoreboard piece right now, again, we brought it up last time as a discussion. And I want to bring it forward now to-
Hey David, it's Jonathan.
Hi Jonathan.
Hey, we're just starting the item on the video board. Mike's gonna kick it off, but then I've got you on speakerphone.
Sounds great, thank you.
So, the reason I'm bringing it forward now is that, as I said at the last discussion, the zero percent interest is something that is unique to this particular program. It is a five-year lease program, forty-nine thousand dollars per year. That is, again, based on the most robust option that we had discussed back in October. If you wanna take a look, I added this late, so I apologize. But in your board folder, Kathy just added all four options again that we had looked at in October. And so if you wanna get a refresher on what those different levels were, if that's part of your decision-making process, please feel free. To date, as it says in here, we've raised a hundred and two thousand dollars. I put together, I guess, what would be an all-on-board sponsorship schedule. If no one else came forward with sponsorships the remainder of the time, which I don't think is realistic. But I do acknowledge that we are clearly in a different economic time right now. And whether we can even, without being insensitive to the economic time, go ask vendors for sponsorships. I think maybe, you know, Dave can give a little more heads-up on the conversations he's had with vendors. But I did put together the sponsorship package, again, much like the staff devices. If we went forward this with our current sponsorship agreements, we would not have a payment in twenty twenty-one, much the same way. But if we got nobody else in that meantime, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, you would start to see some district responsibility, given the choice of what we've gone forward with, which was option four, the most robust scoreboard that we have. Again, the, if we decide to not move forward, what it would mean is more than likely not having anything here in the fall. Again, it would just be another year of not having that. We could certainly answer that question, I suppose, given the economic environment that we're in, that we've tried to do this program, it's on pause right now, we have reason of why that would be. We would have to reach out to these particular vendors, make sure that they're okay with a delay. Allow them to, you know, negotiate whatever they, whatever we wanna negotiate with them as far as delaying another year, or waiting till spring, or whatever that might look like. But the zero percent interest was somewhat, it came across as a very limited time. Again, whether we can negotiate that or not would remain to be seen. Just wanted to get a feel for the board's appetite to take this on at this particular time, given the current sponsorship agreements that we've held, and given the couple that are out there pending. Dave, anything you wanna add to that?
Uh, yes, so I've been in contact with a number of outside companies. And the overall theme that I'm hearing from all of them is that they are very interested. However, in this time of the pandemic, they are not able to fulfill any commitments at this time. So we have a number of people that have said, yes, I'm interested, however, just at this time is not ideal. We would be interested in revisiting again next year at this time. So, to say that there's not interest out there, I don't think that's, I don't think that's true. I think there is a lot of interest, it's just unfortunate times for this to all come forward, for this project.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Um, you know, I appreciate the work that everybody's put into this, and going out, and reaching out in the community, and gaining some sponsorships. I think the wisest thing for us to do at this point, and what I'm leaning toward, is postponing a year, and just kind of getting through this pandemic. I, when I think of our district objectives, there's not a real close fit here with things like student achievement and unified culture. And so, and we haven't achieved the fundraising at the level that we really hoped that we would. So that's my, we're, how I'm feeling at this point in time.
Nancy?
Um, yeah, I'm really torn. I guess my biggest concern is that if we do go ahead with this, and then it's everything's all up and ready for August or September, whatever, and we don't have sports, like, so then why don't we just wait another year? So, I mean, I mean, that's probably my big thing, because I don't think that it'll probably happen. I don't think sports will probably happen.
We'd be in the same situation, whether we put the scoreboard off or not, just basically because there is no co-curriculars and, I don't know. Dave wants to speak, yeah, correct. Understood.
I mean, I, you know, like Karen said, you know, I appreciate the work that everybody did. And I think this was a really good idea, and I think we have a really good product that we selected. And, but I don't know, I'm just worried about that, if we went ahead with that, and there's nothing to use it for, for a year, or whatever, that's kind of a waste of money right now.
Jesse?
I think if that zero percentage is still on the table, I'd feel a little bit more comfortable with it. It's just whether or not that's really the case still. Otherwise, I'm kind of in agreement that if that's not there, I'd probably be out. But I could see this being something that we need in the future. And, you know, you don't want other schools coming here and being like, well, they have no scoreboard, what's wrong with it? So, I mean, it's an optics thing, but at the same time, it's a point of pride for a lot of people that come in and say, look at, you know, this is what we're able to accomplish. This is, you know, us supporting other things, other than educational process, to encourage students to want to expand, you know, beyond just school if they want to. And another thing is, you know, it helps other people come in and see, you know, what we're all about. And it's a, it's a talking point. I could see from, you know, did you hear about that new scoreboard? No, well, let's go to a game and check it out. So from a community standpoint, I could see that pulling more people in. But from the financial standpoint, I can understand if it's not something that we can do right now. But at the zero percent, and for that first year, I think that I'm not opposed to doing that.
From my point of view, you know, it's a project that I supported, I would really love to see it go through. I just think that, like a lot of the sponsors and everybody, I'm still taken by the economy sum. And that a hundred thousand dollars over four years, I think is a big number. I know it's a small portion of our budget, relatively speaking. But without, again, it's a question that can't be answered, because no one can predict the future at this point. But it's one of those things that I don't feel is all-in about at this point with all the uncertainty that we have going around.
If we did go with it, and everybody all of a sudden voted, or wanted to vote yes, wouldn't that imply that they have to make their first payments this year, regardless of whether we have sports, correct? Their first year of their contract would be twenty twenty-one, right?
Yeah, but we have contractual language that, you're right, it would. But the contractual language would say, but you'd get then a sixth year, right? So if nothing would happen, you just back-end it, to say you have an additional year of, or there's actually sports happening, or events happening.
Is it also, I don't see the contract, but is it built in there that says, well, I'm saying if we go the other way, it says, oh, we're not gonna do it this year, we'll revisit next year? Is there something in the contract that tells them they're not gonna have to pay this year?
No, we'd have to negotiate that. We'd have to explain about what's, there's gonna be some conversation that has to occur with that. I would say you could get people that would back out, correct? I mean, we'd have to allow that. We're in essence breaking the contract on our end. We would have to, not that I, all these particular vendors, they wanna be a part of Whitnall. And there's gonna be some goodwill that happens there. And they're gonna understand as much as anybody else what's going on here. And they want this partnership to happen, and we want it to happen. But there's some realities that we're also facing.
Yeah, I hate to be bleak, but I don't see good crowds being allowed to be at some of these things, as terrible as it sounds, considering we start playing August, right? Last weekend in August is generally when play starts, so... Yeah, I can't imagine that's gonna happen.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think we got put on hold.
What's that?
I think you have to put it on hold. I do like that, if we did move forward, that, and there was no product, that it would get another year at the other end. Because I'd say, well, are you kidding me? You know?
Yeah.
So, I have, I have no problem with moving, you're not gonna sell anything either right now. I mean, just not gonna happen.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's even responsible to go out there and do that.
Right, and ask for people, right.
I'd say it probably isn't, if we all of a sudden pull a big scoreboard in, it's probably not the best look, given the environment.
Well, that, there's an optics to it from that standpoint as well. I don't disagree with you.
Yeah.
So, we would make a decision on whether to, yeah, potentially.
Do we have to act on regardless?
Um, Mike, Dave, could you reach out to these vendors and potentially say, hey, we're always looking at postponing a year because of the current climate?
Yeah.
Would you be interested in that one year, or would you be looking to cancel? Dave?
Yes, definitely, I can reach out to every vendor that has contractually agreed to it, and find out what their status is.
Can, if possible, could you get that to us as soon as we're done to review it?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I can start that as early as tomorrow.
So when that'll come out, obviously, review it then, it'll come up as an action item next week. We'll have the normal discussion like we do, make a decision then.
I don't like, I don't like, if we're selling them on a Cadillac, and then we want, I don't like going back on our options. If you told people this is what we are having, we can't say it.
Oh, as far as alternate options and going down, that's fine, okay, okay.
Real quick question, and this is more for Mike. Mike, did Chris from Daktronics indicate that there was a timeline on the zero percent loan aspect?
Yeah, he had stated April thirtieth, but that if we were gonna act in May, they would, you know, make that exception, which makes me wonder if they were just, yeah, yeah.
Oh, they're looking to make business, I mean, just like anybody else is, that's in a tough spot.
Yep, yep, so who knows how long this will last, we'll certainly, but, yeah.
Alright, anybody else? Okay, thank you, Dave.
Thank you, guys, have a good night.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, on to C, people transportation contract amendment.
Okay. I have nothing more to add than what is in here. I think we, and what we discussed the last time. I will say this, so Karen, you had a good question. Karen asked in an email, what are we getting from First Student during this time, in essence? What are we paying for? They're not providing us a service. The stated position of First Student is that we are covering what are fixed costs of theirs, and that they can keep the terminal open in order to have a fluid start to next school year. So for example, we talked with the terminal over the summer about what busing routes are gonna look like, how many buses we need. I mean, there's some communication that happens, and they're saying if we don't have the funds, no one's gonna be there to set tho, to answer those questions. Especially in a year in which we are looking to reroute everybody because of some discrepancies in load of students. I probably have all the same questions that you each have as individual board members. I do know that, because it's public, Greendale did approve this. Franklin does not, is not going to their board with it. And Greenfield is looking at it this month as well, along with us. And so, I can see what their discussion was like, because they're having their board meeting tonight as well, and see what their public discussion was like.
And help me remember, Franklin isn't going to their board because they're making the decision in the district, or they're saying no?
It's district decision, it's a district decision. Part of me just wants to get this out of the way, and to know that we are gonna have a seamless, what they're promising is a seamless transition. You see the contract language, which is in the board packet this time around. There's clearly some protection in there from the district side. No matter what that comes out of this, we are going to have savings-related transportation. It's about eighty-five thousand dollar savings if we pay the fifty percent. If we don't pay the fifty percent, we're talking double that, with then the uncertainty, of course, of what August looks like. To Nancy's point about the scoreboard, we don't even know if transportation is really gonna be a thing in September. And you could start our payments in September, and they might still have six weeks in which to get buses back online, bring staff, because they're gonna collect, they'd have to collect something from us at that point. And we could say, in good faith, we're gonna continue payment starting in September again, should there be a service that needs to be provided every other day, half-days runs. You know, we can't double our fleet next year to do social distancing. That's not a thing, we wouldn't have the funds to do that. So, you can certainly ask, ask the questions that you wanna ask, or let me know what you want further over the course of the next week. But I think between last time's discussion and what I have in the board packet, not much has changed. And the only thing additional I'd be willing to, able to bring forward is how Greenfield's discussion went, and whether any other districts are moving on a decision or not. Hypothetically, could we continue to wait until June even? Probably, we could probably wait till June as well, as we aren't in a hurry, per se. Obviously, from a fiscal year standpoint, I also wanna know what this is gonna look like. So I, again, as I've said about the previous, I'm not married to any of these proposals right now. Because of the uncertainty and the variables, I'm able to go in multiple directions here. So, I guess, I'm willing to do anything for the seven of you to help you make a better, a decision on this.
Just one before we, so there was the talk of what happens if the terminal closes? Will we be able to find a company to start the fall?
And I know you wanted me to look at RightWay. I was unable to get in touch with RightWay, they've got their own things going on too. So, they're pushing, RightWay is pushing with districts. One district in particular offered fifty percent to RightWay, and RightWay flat-out refused, and said we need seventy-five. I don't know what the "or else" was. So, it's, First Student is not the, I will say this for First Student. I have not had the experience with First Student that others are talking about. Never once have they brought up the language of, yeah, but you have to do everything in your power to pay us, because of the language and, the particular person we're working with has never pressured us in that regard. Uh, has been very, what I would call, on his part, matter of fact, and the stated position, never has pressured once. When we've asked, will the terminal close? To me, he's never said the terminal's closing, it's been about a transition. Greendale and Franklin have argued that they have heard that language from him, that the terminal would close. So, even getting a straight answer on that has been, has been tough, and he's worked around that. Again, asking the financials from the last time? Not happening. Uh, I think we've tried to negotiate from a, from a position of strength in saying, we'd like to see zero percent rate increases over the next two years. They have flat-out refused that, and I've not revisited that proposal. They are willing to go to bid, um, after this particular year. I don't know how comfortable First Student is with the current financial position of the terminal to begin with, which I think gives them some, um, strength from which to negotiate from. What I mean by that is, I, I mentioned this last time, they had different wage expectations at the beginning of the contract versus what has played out throughout the contract. Fifteen fifty being a starting wage has now gone to eighteen fifty, and that was never the intention, uh, of, of the contract. They came in months after when I came on, so we're talking six months after the contract was signed, wanting to renegotiate the contract in twenty sixteen. We've said no all the way through to, to now, in which we're in the last year of our contract. So, I don't know how comfortable First Student is with, 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 with the terminal to begin with, and thus, uh, may have the ability to say, no, we don't, we're, we're, we aren't gonna negotiate that further, because I don't know whether they want to or not. Um, so, I'm just laying those, those factors out there as far as what, what I think about. So, the services, Karen, to get back to your question, not, not, obviously, no co-curricular or regular transportation service. It's about keeping the terminal open for communication, maintenance of busing, uh, paying fixed costs that were realized already for our districts, realizing that they thought they would get three more months of revenue, and trying to survive on essentially six months of no revenue between March and September one. October really is when they get, when we, we get the first billing in October, really. And so, they'd be going on six months of no revenue.
Do you saw anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, you can. Really?
You sure?
Uh, she's got some game going on, I gotta figure out what that is.
Okay, Karen?
Okay, so, um, I was trying to research this a little bit before the meeting, what is our obligation to provide busing? So, I was looking at the state statute, and it looks like, like the district is required to provide busing. Um, I was reading something about a city option, which may or may not apply to us based on population. Okay. Okay, and then, right now, what I'm reading here is that the recommendation to the board is to approve this. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
That is the base scenario that I'm coming forward with, because that is what the consortium has put out there, and First Student has agreed to.
Okay. Oh, and then, when you're talking about keeping this Mesquite go, turn, terminal open, we don't know for sure whether or not they can deliver on that.
Uh, we are taking it as the good faith that this fifty percent allows that Mesquite go terminal to remain open.
Okay. Thanks.
Or else, what are we doing here? And, and, and there is the language that if they don't, obviously, we get these dollars back.
There is, or is there...
There is the language, where if it would close, we would get this payment back.
Okay.
Are they set up as a separate entity? Or are they part of the nationwide company? Because if, if they're a separate entity and they file for bankruptcy, we wouldn't be able...
I, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's bankruptcy, I, I think it's some, I, I don't know if it's bankruptcy. Uh, First Student in and of itself is gonna go bankrupt, I don't know about that.
No, I, I don't mean the national company, I mean, if this Mesquite location is set up as a separate entity.
Yeah, no, I don't think it's a separate entity.
Okay.
But that, whatever business decisions are taking place where this particular terminal is hemorrhaging money, we're gonna close it. Here's the contract, there's a force majeure in there that allows us to do that, or that the district, I, I don't know.
Okay, just to make sure we have some way to actually recoup that money.
Yeah, 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 understood. I mean, it's contractual, it, it, it would be contractual in the amendment.
All right, Nancy?
So, our contract with them goes for another year, though, right?
Yeah, it does.
So, if they close the terminal, what happens if they renege on the contract? Nothing?
We're, we're, we're paying...
What's, if they're having a contract, then?
Well, the, the force, the, the lang, I have to look at the language, Nancy. Hold on. So, there's, there's force majeure language in the original contract that says such and so, a thirty-day notice, okay, will, because of whatever these particular reasons are, you could break the contract.
Okay, so it's a thirty-day notice?
And so, this particular contract says, the amendment says the contractor agrees not to invoke that force majeure, uh, clause relating to the COVID-nineteen health emergency. So, that would be the language that's in there. Yeah.
Jesse?
Given the fact that they haven't put much pressure on you in terms of, you know, we need this decision right now, I, I'd be willing to wait until after the, the second Safe Red Home order is over with, to make a decision on that. Just based on, okay, if we know for sure that everything's going back to normal and that gets removed, then you at least have a better idea of, okay, we're gonna still do business with them. If they're not putting any pressure on us, and there's already a no from one of the other districts, I think it's a good idea to see what else they're saying, because initially it was, yes, let's do this from a unified standpoint. Now, it's kind of going the other way, so I'd really like to see...
Yeah, I think, I think, Jesse, where, where it is, is Greendale has already said yes, and Franklin, because there, there isn't a lot of board discussion, or if they had board discussion, it, it wasn't, it wasn't a voted yes or no, their director invoked the, the contract. Greenfield brought up questions for the first time, so, and they're, again, like I said, they're discussing tonight. Other districts outside of our consortium, so we're talking Waukesha, we're talking West Alice, West Milwaukee, who work with First Student, have agreed so far not to. Uh, Cedarburg, uh, has decided not to. Hartford, um, who works, these are now different companies they work with, have decided not to, at least not yet. So, that's not an unfounded position right now, um, so...
Yeah, I don't, I don't like the idea of gambling with transportation, but at the same time, we seem to hold most of the advantage here, so if it can benefit us in the long run by doing so, and there's no pressure to make the decision right away. I know you'd like to get that taken...
Yeah, that's selfish on my part, yeah, no, it is.
My, my preference would be to wait and see if, if that Safe Red Home gets lifted, and then make a decision based on that.
Table it, yeah, thank you.
Steven?
Um, I think I kind of asked questions, like, kind of earlier, um, I don't, it seems these reasonable, it's what we're going, I agree with Jesse that I don't think we have to rush to necessarily decide. I'm gonna wait to see how it plays out, but certainly with the proposing, it seems reasonable. I get it from their point of view that they need to cover their things, and we wanna have our services available, but I still think we're favored in this matter as far as seeing how it pans out in the next month or so.
Okay. Kevin?
We have a whole nother year left on this. I frankly don't think, uh, busing's going to be a big thing for anybody going forward as far as we're gonna be doing a lot of busing. I don't see it happening, I don't see a bunch of parents, especially around here, that are gonna put their kid on a...
You mean, just their own decision to...
Just their own decision to put their kids on a bus with sixty kids, I don't know how many it can be, I don't know, seventy, is it seventy?
Sixty is the, is the most common number.
Yeah, six, with, with that many other kids.
Yeah, yeah, two, three, and a seed, for some cases.
I tell you, I don't see it happening, but that's just me, so, I, I'm in a rush, I don't mind if we table it or whatever going forward, but I don't feel the need, and we have a whole nother year. We don't even know what this is gonna look like in the fall. If all of a sudden this changes the norm of how things are done, we can deal with that next year. I mean, especially if those bigger, you said Waukesha's not paying them, and West Alice, West Milwaukee? If that's the case, I'm not as concerned about what Greendale's gonna do, I know they're in our consortium, but...
I'm against paying it, that's it.
Um, yeah, I think we, I like Jesse's point, I think we should at least, a minimum, wait till June, see what happens there, and then revisit it at that point.
So, what I would, um, recommend, and because we put it on tonight as a discussion for future action, and, and so typically, we would bring it back next Monday, and then the board would just vote, someone would have to make a motion to table it, um, for a future date, um, and that's what we do, we, because this was a discussion here, um, that, that would allow us, that is the action that we're taking on it, is to formally, basically postpone making any action on it, but it is an action in and of itself, so we will have it on the agenda, and you can feel free, someone can make whatever motion you want, someone can make a motion to approve it, someone can make an emotion to table it, that is up to you, but you will, we will move it forward on the eighteenth, and regardless of what the recommendation on the proposal is, the board itself makes the motion to fill in the blank. Does that make sense? Okay, I just want to be clear, so you're not surprised if it seems like there was a lot of people saying that I might not approve, or I'd wish to wait. It still will come forward, we won't, we don't make a recommendation or proposal to table it. That's a, that's a motion that one of you would have to make. Our recommendation still is to approve it, otherwise, we wouldn't be bringing forward a, a proposal to approve. Does that make sense? Okay, I just wanted to be clear, so, since we only have one week between board meetings this time, um, just because of Memorial Day, that's, I just wanted to be clear on that, so...
So, I real...
So, you sure you don't wanna share your...
No.
Last time.
Very good.
So, I realize this is only May eleventh.
Yeah.
When do we start talking either to them, amongst ourselves, as to what we're gonna do come September one?
I think that, at least from my level, those are the conversations that we're having at the state level. We were trying to put, I don't wanna say pressure, but I guess it's probably, uh, DHS, because they're the ones who are providing the statewide recommendation, and, and busing is not unique to us, obviously. Um, and so, to Kevin's point about parents here, we, when our district, you know, is in five square miles, think about other districts that are two hundred and fifty square miles, and parent, and busing and all of that is the only way sometimes that their kids can, and, and you think about those other parts of the state. So, there is a pretty strong need right now for DHS to sort of step into whatever this looks like and give guidance on it as it relates to, how would you even, I mean, based on, I think, right now, the Milwaukee Transit System has ten people, is that accurate on a bus? Is that, I don't know what, I mean, there's a limit like that, so, right?
I believe it's ten.
So, if you think about that, that's probably about six feet apart with kids, I mean, I don't know, like, what that would even look like. To counteract that, we don't know what it looks like for reopening at the same time. So, to even get into, like, routing, or how many buses, or what would you do, you know, which, which drives which? Do we say, this is what we need, and you need to provide that? And then we'd still have to survey parents to decide if they would even do that. The second part is if they're saying, this is all we can do, and then we can't be limited by what they can or can't do either, because to the point of how many buses they have, if whatever schedule we do come up with when we reopen, if they don't have the number of vehicles to accommodate whatever schedule, so there, it's, it's a interrelated part. Um, but at the same time, I, I think bus companies, like, super interesting on this because the schedule of reopening is really, school bus companies, not the ones that have, you know, that do tours and, and all of those things, exist to service schools, and the core premise of why they exist is just, is uncertain right now, whether or not that's something that we'll come back to. So, that is very fascinating when you think about that. So, to threaten a closing of a terminal might be futile at this point, when we're not even sure what school looks like moving forward.
So, if we go virtual even for another semester or half a year, they're going under. So, why are we, we, why are we paying the beast now? And to say we got some language in the contract that says they're gonna give us our money back? But, but they want this money now to carry them to them, there's not gonna be money there. That's just basic.
And to Kevin's point, we would still have to provide the busing service as we do now, it's just a matter of whether or not parents will actually have their kids go.
You know, I, in a normal, in normal circumstances, I would tell you, you are correct, because that's state law. I, I stopped saying that.
But as of right now, no, but, but as of now, unless state law changes, we would theoretically have to provide busing for all the same students going into a normal school year, unless state law changes. So, to your point, even if parents decide not to, we're still having to run the routes, do all that. Students may not be there, they may be there, but we still have to be prepared for that.
Yeah, I mean, and that's assuming that the normal school day is the normal school day too, right? I mean, that's, we may be operating eight AM to eight PM in the future.
Even if we survey parents, we can't say, well, you said no, so we're not gonna have this, 'cause two weeks later.
To be frank, even if we gave them this money, it, it could be the point that we've got the stipulation of ten people on a bus in the county, but you don't know what it could be. If all of a sudden it's, we're gonna let kids go back to school, it's, it could be, we can only allow fifteen kids on a bus, and then we need three times as many buses, they can't afford it, they're gonna ask for more. I'm not con...
They couldn't provide that, we couldn't pay that.
Yeah, so I'm, I am not concerned that we're not gonna be without a need that we're gonna have. I don't, I don't see it being a problem. Especially, I will give you this, especially in the current work environment, that, all the people that I work with and all things do, how lenient it is as far as your schedule now with the companies that are open and your ability to go do stuff, and we understand this is a cre, this is a different environment. Take thirty-five minutes to have a break, or go drive your kids, or do something with your kids. If your kids are in there, you have to homeschool, you have to do this, or whatever it is. So, I don't see it being as strong a stipulation, or people can't drop their kids off at school like it used to be, where you have to be at work at a certain time, and you have to do this. Things are way more flexible than they ever been, and I still don't see a bunch of parents thinking that they're gonna put their kids on some bus, especially in the winter.
Okay, anybody else before we move on?
Those are your survey question.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, for you, there, there would be, be, there'd be help in this. This is our decision, and you, you would wanna start thinking about that sooner rather than later. While it's only May eleventh, it's already May eleventh, and, yeah.
Again, we still have another year, if our contract was up, then I'd say I'd be a little worried, but we have a whole nother year, and it, they might, like, they might not be here.
Well, our contract was up, we weren't prepared to die to a, a new company.
Well, yeah, but we'd be, we'd be looking, because we'd have to figure something out with current state law, saying we have to provide busing.
Okay. Thank you. On to D, BCPL loan.
Oh, jeez. All right, um, the cafeteria remodel has, uh, really three current funding sources. It has Fund Forty-One, which has one point, call it one point four, five million. We are this close to finishing up our final billing with CG Schmidt, which will allow our final billing for Bray Architects to take place, to finalize our contingency for, from the referendum. Uh, that looks to be somewhere in the three to four hundred thousand dollar range, uh, for what was left from the referendum. We also are clearly going to have some sort of surplus this year. Uh, right now, health insurance is trending at about six hundred thousand, under budget. Uh, we have, regardless, transportation savings, we have substitute savings, we have utilities that are, we were already gonna be recognizing savings with our utilities, mainly because of our, um, boiler system at the high school, uh, running less and more efficiently. Uh, obviously, now with nobody in the buildings, we are being super, uh, shutting down a majority of the buildings, uh, from an energy standpoint.
Did you say since we replaced those...
Yeah, we were already gonna be running well under.
I wanna hear that again. I wanna hear that again.
We are already running well under, on our utility budget, specifically because of new boilers, both at Hales Corners and the high school.
Very good, thank you.
And, um, so, so we're gonna see a surplus. So, what I'm saying is, I believe we have enough in order to cover the cafeteria remodel with operational... with operational surplus this year, Fund Forty-One, and referendum contingency if the board would be willing to use those dollars towards that. And our question is open-ended enough, which specifically mentions high school infrastructure as a referendum project. And this would really be an extension of that multipurpose room, having the flooding taken care of, and offset from the tech ed area. It works well. However, given the economic uncertainty that is out there, my question is whether, what I've been questioning is whether we do want to use those particular funds on the cafeteria remodel when we know that we also have another potential funding source, which is the state trust fund loan at our disposal. So what I've looked at is we have right now a current, we call it non-referendum debt. We have non-referendum debt with a last payment next March of twenty-one. So in the twenty twenty-one school year, we have a non-referendum debt ending. Right now, that's a one hundred and eighteen thousand dollar payment that would be made and then disappear.
It's a fiber optic project.
Correct. What this particular loan would do would simply replace that payment, not next year, but in March of twenty twenty-two, for the next eight years after that, at about a hundred and five to a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So we would drop that payment off and just continue that, the new payment forward from a budgetary standpoint. I've requested eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to cover with our Fund Forty-One and this, and then we can determine whether it's referendum contingency, which is what I would recommend, or surplus to then cover the cafeteria remodel. What that means is now you have surplus that can go into fund balance to either offset operations over the next three years as we deal with different economic fallouts. You could take that surplus and use it towards, you know, our capital improvement plan that we just passed. So instead of worrying about a nineteen sixty-seven roof over the next three years, we're gonna handle that out of our surplus and not have to find a place to put that in our operational budget should things fail. I bring it forward because I believe that it provides us some economic flexibility and stability in a time in which we don't really know what the economics are gonna be. As I put in the proposal, the con of it is you continue that one hundred and ten, one hundred and eighteen thousand dollar payment when that could have just dropped off the table. We spent our surplus and that one hundred and eighteen thousand doesn't exist anymore. It can go back into the general operations. That would be the, a position you could take. And I'd be like, yep, that's, that would be a way to create some flexibility as well. This is a one-time though infusion of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You could even treat this differently. You could take the surplus that we have this year, put it towards the cafeteria remodel, and then you've got your eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to still handle roofing that you don't have to think about over the next three years. So this is, like I said, I bring it forward because I believe that it provides us the flexibility we're looking for in uncertain economic times. A three percent interest rate is nothing to sneeze at. That's pretty low. Just a few months ago, it was four and a quarter, so we've dropped off that. And the nice part of this program is that it is funds that go to the Board of, Commission of Public Lands or whatever that acronym is. And the funds come back to school districts in the form of common school funds that go towards libraries. So it's a good program. You could probably get another half point lower somewhere else if you wanted to. But on eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars and not, and paying a fee to, you know, a municipal advisor, instead of just going through the BCPL is probably worth doing. So I'm willing to take any questions on this particular strategy. I think it's, I think it's a smart thing to do. Like I said, with all these proposals, I'll revisit it one more time. I'm good in multiple directions here. I'm bringing it forward because I think it's what we should do. But I can take any questions.
I don't have any questions.
Nancy?
No questions.
Jesse?
Can you just repeat one more time, the amount that is going to fall off is how much?
One eighteen, one hundred and eighteen thousand.
And the amount if we did this, that would go back on would be how much?
I structured it over eight years, it'd be about the same, one ten, one eighteen.
So maybe a little bit less?
Maybe a little less. So this year, we paid one seventy-eight. We had a second loan that, so we've had two loans right now that are non-referendum. One is falling, one is falling off this year. And so we're gonna go from one seventy-eight to one eighteen next year. And then this would continue that one eighteen. So we've been dealing with the one seventy-eight, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar payments. So it'd be less than that from this current year.
You're really number one in his heart.
Yeah, that was unintentional.
That's all I had, thank you.
Yes, Steven?
So I had contacted Mike because I had a lot of questions about what had changed because of the whole cafeteria funding and how it went. So to me, this sounded attractive when he described it. Just like what I said before with the scoreboard, it's kind of like with so much not knowing. This, I think this gives us a lot of flexibility. Mike had indicated that if we end up not needing it, we can just kind of pay it off early and then all of our payments kind of fall off if we decide not to use it. On the other hand, we do have quite that extensive ten-year capital list, or five-year capital list. There's a lot, a lot of items on that this could help us work with. And it'll give us flexibility going into either next year where we don't know if state law's gonna change or certainly the following year with the next biennial budget where who knows what it's gonna look like. So it gives us a little bit of security that way. It lets us hold on to our funds as we need to and, you know, just gives us flexibility, you know. Again, if we have a huge thing in the fall and we end up a lot more of our health insurance, we might need it for that, who knows? So there's all kinds of things that we don't know and I think this gives us a little security.
Thank you, Kevin?
What is the current estimate on the roof?
Say that again?
What is the current estimate on this, sixty-seven or fifty-seven?
Well, we got one nineteen fifty-eight section and a large swath of nineteen sixty-seven sections. Multiple millions of dollars. So the, much like with the middle school roof though, if we can handle the high school roofing prior to insulation failing, it's a huge difference. And so if we can handle those in a timely manner, that could bring about, that's that deferred maintenance savings you talk about, that people talk about.
I can feel so strongly about this as you do about the other thing.
What's that?
Why is this a one-way or the other, but you're bringing this forward and you're not, this is what we should do?
Well, I'm bringing forward, this is what we should do.
Why? But you said, when you said earlier, well, about the, I'm really strong about this thing with these other things.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because I'm naturally adverse to taking on debt. I think though in this situation where we have a debt payment falling off, granted, it's within our operational budget, but this is strategies that are used in school finance all the time, which is you've got something falling off, don't lose that. Keep that payment there and then get this infusion to handle large projects that we never, we don't have eight hundred and fifty thousand necessarily at a crack to just handle roofing. So that's why I'm bringing this forward and feel a little more strongly about it.
How's this gonna affect our credit rating?
It shouldn't affect it at all because it's simply going to be the same payment we have been making. When we talk about credit rating, it's really the fund balance piece that plays into it large. And so this actually increases fund balance and shows a stronger financial position.
No further questions?
Yeah, thanks.
So I really liked the trust fund. After spending some time with the gentleman at the convention and realizing what it all is about and we do benefit from it through our library system, right? We get like fifty-eight thousand or something. They have it all listed. It's a good thing. And Nancy can attest this, this district had zero debt for many years, many years. We had one loan that was zero interest through the state for fifty-five thousand dollars. We kept paying, I don't know what it was for, but we kept paying it.
That's what's falling off this year.
Right, okay. But I also realize now that we probably deferred a lot of stuff that made that look real good. And now things are coming, you gotta come in a roost and you gotta take care of them. I am concerned that we would add to the, to the, we would take some of this money and add to the. Fund balance.
So what it would do is if you're gonna use it specifically for the cafeteria, we were, we're gonna show a surplus at the end of this year regardless. Okay, whether we, whether we use it for the cafeteria or not because we're gonna take our surplus that we're showing and then spend it in twenty twenty-one on the cafeteria. So we were gonna show a surplus regardless of this particular loan. So this is, this is not changing that financial position as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
But doesn't it lock us into doing certain, only certain things with, we put into the fund balance?
No, fund balance is wide open. If we move things to Fund Forty-One from there, it locks us into capital improvement projects only.
But it protects it.
Protect, protects it meaning.
And it wouldn't go against.
Correct. No one asks, well, what's your Fund Forty-One balance? Everyone asks, what's your general fund balance? So all things that come out from, any reports that are done, they all look at Fund Ten, fund balance.
Because I'm just thinking of possibly legislature looking at that and saying, start whacking away at that and so we put it somewhere else, we could protect it.
Yeah, yeah, we're in an interesting, correct. We're in a really interesting position in that we were supposed to show a deficit this year anyway. So a surplus to us could come out as a balanced budget at the end of the year. Do you understand what I mean by that?
But what you're asking is if legislators see it as a surplus, are they then gonna say, well, then you have to use it? Even though we know it's not.
Well, I don't think they would look at each district individually. They would look at the big thing and say, you know, and this is where it's coming from, from your fund balance.
From fund balance of putting it, I mean, we know after not having a capital improvement plan, we were much more aware of what our actual capital improvement projects are and where the priorities are. So that's putting us in a much better place. And so what you're doing is calling reserved or unreserved. Basically by putting it in there, you're saying you have to spend it on capital improvement and the board feels very strongly on that, that's the position. If you want to keep the flexibility, you keep it in there. The risk is how others view that when they're looking at fund balance and that's the conversation.
And the risk is specifically leaving it as quote-unquote unassigned fund balance. Now, the state of Wisconsin has added in some codes in which you can allocate that money a little differently, but nonetheless, it's still Fund Ten, general balance that exists, that's your quote-unquote unprotected.
I was gonna say, I think we need to, you do have to consider how ridiculously low interest rates are and try to capitalize on that because it's not, I don't think it's ever gonna get to eighties levels, but it's not gonna stay where it is for as much more.
You're probably right. I mean, in seven years, are we looking at three percent in the tree? I think, oh my gosh, we're not paying anything on this thing. No, three percent is no joke. I mean.
I think we need to, I think it's a good consideration given that it's what it is.
Anybody else before we move on? Okay, so this will come back.
This will come back, yeah, this will come back.
Okay, great. All right, so then on to six items for future consideration. Anyone? Okay, seven announcements.
Nothing's going on in your lives?
Anything, anything district-related?
Well, now, so we had someone in, was in the WSAB magazine.
WSAB, oh yeah?
Oh yeah, that's right, they should, yeah. So one of our behavioral specialists was in there and so, yeah. I would just say if you haven't taken a look at our social media over the last couple of weeks, we've had a lot of things going on for having nobody in buildings. We talked about their appreciation or a lot of the things that are out there. And some great pictures on Friday to go into the weekend from a lot of parents who sent in pictures of their child holding a sign up for teachers. But a lot of stuff over the last couple of weeks for that. Stay tuned for an announcement later this weekend in social media. I'll share it with you too and hopefully we'll have those staff members join us virtually next Monday night to sort of just give them a shout out too. So I'll keep you in suspense.
Yeah, and I was there for the, I know other board members were too, for the senior sign handout. And I just want to thank all the people that were out there. Obviously, the weather didn't cooperate like we all hoped. But every car that drove by, and there were some cars that drove by like five or six times, they just kept circling the parking lot. But the kids all seemed to be excited and happy and enjoying it. So it was a really cool experience. So to the administration and teachers and staff who stood out there in the rain, thank you all. And it looked like the seniors had a great time. Anybody else, announcements? Okay, eight meeting debrief. Anyone? Fantastic. Now I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing on motion carries.